Good evening. Call this meeting to order. It's a regular City Council meeting of April 9th, 2018. The time is 7:30 PM. This mic is really loud. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett. Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilor Grafstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here. A motion to excuse Mr. Corbett, please.
Your Honor.
Mrs. Scott.
I move to excuse Councilwoman Corbett from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
Support.
Any discussion on excusing Mr. Corbett from tonight's meeting? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All right. If you'd please rise, we'll have an invocation to be given by Councilwoman Scott and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts and minds as we make our decisions. Help us to seek you first in all we do together. We give you our citizens, our suppliers, our customers, and our workforce. May we be always mindful of their servants and the importance of their contributions. We ask this in your name.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Please be seated. All right. We have a situation where we have an acting city clerk. So could I please have a motion to appoint Ramona Sanchez as the acting city clerk for tonight's meeting?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Ramona Sanchez as the acting city clerk for tonight's meeting? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Okay. We can go to presentations. We have two tonight. The first one's for National Animal Control Officers Week and the second is the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. Ms. Marsh.
Police Chief Haynes has requested that council issue a proclamation declaring the week of April 8th through April 14th be National Animal Control Officers Appreciation Week in Madison Heights. This proclamation recognizes and honors animal control officer Suzette Geisel, part-time assistant Julie Weaver, and Madison Heights Animal Shelter volunteers and all animal control officers for the important work that they do.
Thank you. Animal Control Officer Geisel, would you please accept this proclamation from the city? Ms. Marsh, do you have any comments for the next presentation?
Yes, I do.
Oh, Suzette, of course. Sure.
Just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, and all the council members for this nice award. I also want to thank my parents, Valerie and Steve Reminar, for coming down from Higgins Lake to also be here tonight for this presentation. Also want to invite everyone to our upcoming fundraising this weekend. It will be at the Union Hall on Horace Brown Drive. It's our Quarter Mania. It's a lot of fun, and we hope that all of you attend. Doors open at 5:15, and it goes until we're done, and it'll be a lot of fun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marsh.
Okay. Police Chief Haynes has also requested that council issue a proclamation declaring the week of April 8th through April the 14th to be National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Madison Heights. In honor of the city's dedicated 911 dispatchers whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, and Steve Nita is here to accept the proclamation.
Steve, will you please? Thanks for coming. All right. Thank you very much. We can continue on on our agenda. There's no public hearings, but tonight we'll have meeting open to the public, so this is the opportunity to address City Council on any subject. So if you'd be so kind, come to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone. The mics are a little loud, so just be aware of the sensitivity, but good evening, sir.
Richard Clark, 29328 Howard Avenue, Madison Heights. I have two things, Your Honor. If I read in the paper correctly, that it was okay for $7,500 to be given, two free passes to the way pool, discounted passes. Why couldn't that money be given to Parks and Rec who would benefit everybody in the city, not just a few? The other thing is on the water bills. I received two calls of why on the bill it says water, I'll give you the prices, $30.40. Sewer, $34.40. Stormwater charge, $33.20. Now, could you give, I understand it, but the people who called me don't understand it. Why was this raised? Why do we have this stormwater charge? Why and how was it calculated?
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone want an answer? I mean, it's usually just for public comments. Ms. Marsh, I guess if you have something to say, yeah.
Let me to address it, I can. So on July 1st of 2016, actually, the city went through a restructuring of our water and sewer rates, and so for many years, we paid stormwater as part of our sewer charge. So on July 1st, 2016, the sewer rates actually were decreased 25%, and we added a stormwater charge to each person's bill throughout the entire city, whether you're commercial or residential. It's different for each person, and it's based on how much impervious surface or surface that you have that water will go through versus surface that you have that water won't. And it's based on, one unit is $11.37 per quarter, and each unit equals 2,600 square feet of surface. So it varies depending on lot size. So in the example that you gave, they must have three, we call them ERUs, equivalent residential units, and so they must have like a fairly big lot or a lot that is covered with buildings or pavement or something like that. So we have restructured that. The sewer rate went down significantly for that, and it only covers the charge that Oakland County charges us. So what Oakland County charges us gets divided between all the ERUs in the city, and there is no other charge included in that. So people did see a direct reduction in their sewer bill as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to address City Council? Any subject?
Thank you, Your Honor. Karen McGovern, 926 Tango, and I'm here on behalf of Little League Baseball to invite all of you to our opening day to throw out the first pitch. That'll be on Saturday, May 19th at 10:00 AM sharp.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Would anyone else like to address City Council on any subject? Okay. Thank you. We can continue on. No one's asked to be recognized. We have a communication from Cub Scout PAC 1589 regarding use of Civic Center Park Pavilion C. Ms. Marsh.
Cub Scout PAC 1589 has requested the use of Civic Center Park Pavilion C to hold their family picnic on Saturday, July the 14th, from 11:00 to 3:00. Staff and I recommend approval of the event, subject to council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events. Council will note that the group is requesting a waiver of pavilion rental fee and the damage deposit.
Okay. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott.
I move for Cub Scout PAC 1589 to hold their annual family picnic, subject to council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events, and this would be for July 14th, 2018, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 AM, and I would like to have them granted a waiver of pavilion rental fee and damage deposit.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Okay. We'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Next on the agenda are reports. We have three this evening. Let's just begin with the first one. The first one is the waiver of the underfunded status for the general employees and other post-employment benefits plan, OPEB. Ms. Marsh.
Under Public Act 202 of 2017, the general employees' OPEB plan or other post-employment benefits has been determined by the state to have an underfunded status. In accordance with this act, we are applying for a waiver of unfunded status for the system. Council has been provided with the application for waiver for the general employees' OPEB plan. This waiver requires City Council's approval prior to submittal to the state of Michigan. The application has been reviewed by Special Labor Council.
What's the wish of City Council? Would anyone make a motion? Take a stab at it?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Scott.
I move for City Council's approval to file a waiver of underfunded status for the general employees' other post-employment benefits plan.
Very good. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
Support.
Thanks. I'll restate this motion. It was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings to approve filing of the waiver of underfunded status for the general employees' other post-employment benefits plan. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Ms. Marsh, do you have a report for item D2?
Yes. Under Public Act 202, the police and fire OPEB plan has also been determined by the state to have an underfunded status. In accordance with this act, we are again applying for a waiver for underfunded status for the system. Council has been provided with the application, and Special Labor Council has reviewed it, so council is being requested to approve or submittal to the state.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Scott. Thank you.
I move for City Council approval to file a waiver of underfunded status for the police and fire other post-employment benefits plan.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, to approve the filing with the state of Michigan of a waiver of underfunded status for the police and fire other post-employment benefits plan. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Ms. Marsh, can I please have a report for item D3?
Under the same act, Public Act 202 of 2017, the police and fire pension plan has also been determined by the state to have an underfunded status. We are applying for a waiver of underfunded status for this system also, and council is being requested to approve the application for waiver for submittal to the state.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
I move for City Council to approve filing a waiver of underfunded status for police and fire pension plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the filing of a waiver of underfunded status for the police and fire pension plan. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. All those motions carried, so we can continue on to item F1, which is the 2018 Ambassador Parking Lot Rehabilitation. Ms. Marsh.
As part of the fiscal year 2018 budget, the Ambassador Park parking lot was scheduled for a complete rehabilitation in the amount of $75,000. The park features several popular amenities, including a recently repaved half-mile walking path, tennis courts, and a soccer field. As such, it's heavily used during the summer months. The existing asphalt surface has deteriorated to the point where a Band-Aid fix is no longer possible, warranting the complete replacement of both sections of the parking lot. The pulverize and pave approach has been proven extremely successful for our recent projects and results in a significant cost savings as opposed to the remove and replace and hauling and disposal costs are nearly eliminated. In late December, staff was notified of a potential one-time community development block grant funding increase for a budgeted shovel-ready capital outlay project that is contained in the recreation master plan. The scheduled rehabilitation of Ambassador Park parking lot is the only project that met all of these criteria. Documentation was submitted, and the additional funding was approved as part of our annual CDBG application in the amount of $52,201. Because the CDBG program is federally funded through the Department of Housing and Urban Development, the project has to adhere to federal bidding and work requirements. Further, the identified project must be completed by May of this year. Due to the complexity of these requirements, the city's consulting engineering firm, Norrigan Fraus, was tasked with the preparation of the bid documents. On March 5th, an invitation to bid was published, and on March 21st, seven sealed bids were received by the deadline. Upon review, S&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company of Canton Township provided the lowest bid for the project. Reference checks were favorable and the company performing several projects of other municipalities in recent years. Staff and I recommend that council award the bid for the Ambassador Park parking lot rehabilitation to the lowest responsible bidder, S&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company of Canton Township, for the total project amount of $96,522.50. Funding is budgeted and available for this project.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we award the bid for the Ambassador Park parking lot rehabilitation project to the lowest responsible bidder, S&amp;J Asphalt Paving Company of Canton Township, for a total project in the amount of $96,522.50.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? You know, I think it's important, you know, it's been a longstanding policy of this city that we have a robust Parks and Recreation Department, and taking care of our physical assets is one of those important values we have. You often hear complaints from people who don't use the parks or the library or the senior center, or maybe they don't have kids in school anymore, and these people complain, why does the government spend money on parks, senior centers, libraries, or schools even? That's just the cost of living in a civilized society. And for over 60 years, the people of Madison Heights have told us, City Council members, that our park system is important. So thank you for spending money on this park. Thank you to staff and engineers for putting this project together and the package and bringing us these bidders. Is there any other discussion from council members?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I just wanted to compliment what you said, and I also want to make sure that the citizens know that $52,201 over half are coming from CDBG grant.
That's great. That's great.
Yes.
Yep. I just want to use the time that I'm in this chair to speak out for things that matter. I'll use every minute when I'm up here to speak for the parks and recreation and for our people, so thank you for supporting me in this idea, guys. Any other discussion? All right. We'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We can continue on to the minutes. We have three packages of minutes. Could I please have a motion regarding the minutes of the special meeting of March 19, please?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss.
I move that we approve the minutes of the special council meeting of 3/19/18 as printed.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to approve the minutes as printed of the special meeting of 3/19/18. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I will have to abstain on that because I was not present at that meeting.
Of course. And you were excused from that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All right. Recognizing the one abstention.
On the 19th.
I think for both, yeah.
I was in Lansing.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah.
So recognizing the one abstention, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, with the abstention. Can I please have a motion regarding the minutes of, the special meeting minutes of 3/26?
Your Honor.
Special meeting, sir? Yeah.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the special council meeting of 3/26/18 as printed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to approve as printed the special meeting minutes of 3/26/18. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
I will abstain on that one as I was not present for that meeting either.
Thank you. And you were also excused, and I'll recognize the abstention. Any other discussion? All right. Recognizing that one abstention, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries, just like the last. Can I have a motion regarding the regular minutes of 3/26, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So moved.
As printed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Grafstein.
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Geddings, supported by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt as printed the regular council minutes of 3/26/18. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next section of our agenda is, well, if we have any nominations to boards and commissions. Do council members have any applications on their desk to bring forward at this time to any of our boards? All right. That's fine. Hearing no nominations, we can continue. We do not have an executive session scheduled tonight, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from council members or staff. Usually, we've got Mr. Corbett, but Mr. Bliss, the floor is yours.
Thanks. Well, I just wanted to take a moment to highlight, again, the arts boards photo contest. We've already been getting submissions in. You know, there's a great energy about it, and I'm really excited. If anybody hasn't submitted a photo yet, it's really painless. Just go to Madison-Highs.org backslash photo contest, submit a photo in any one of six different categories. The photo has to be taken in Madison Heights, but it could be at any time since the city was founded. So historical photos are really good. It does have some limits with the resolution and the color, so you'll have to, you know, make sure that it, you know, is a high enough resolution, but scanned older photos could absolutely work as well. We've gotten a few of those. We've gotten some really good shots of animals. There was one of a bee that was pretty phenomenal, and so the arts board is seeing these as they're coming in, and, you know, just really excited about what this program is going to be. But one thing I didn't mention in the last meeting when we kicked off this contest is it's being fueled, the prizes, the printing of the calendar, all of that stuff is being funded by donations from local businesses and residents themselves. And so if anybody would like to make a contribution to the arts board, you know, please see me afterwards or give a call to City Hall, and we could facilitate that for you. It would be earmarked specifically for those purposes, for growing arts in our city, and then you'd be on a wall of recognition on the live exhibits that we're doing, excuse me, you'd be on a page on our calendar that would be talking about your donation, your support, and then we'd obviously cover on social media as well for everybody who's donated. So far, we've had some great businesses and residents that enabled us to offer the prize money that we did, but we're still fundraising. So if anybody, and sorry, my voice is a little bit rough today, we're still fundraising, so if anybody would like to support growing and expanding arts and cultural programming in our city, this is a great time to do it because this is right as we're getting going. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geddings, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. If I could just call on Joe Vitale for a moment. I don't know the date, Joe, for the upcoming run and if there's still time to register. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Your Honor, Council. It's April 14th, this Saturday.
April 14th, and registration.
Registration is still open. Yes. Actually, you can register all the way up until the race. You can walk up and register as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
City Attorney, Mr. Sherman. Couple of quick things, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Suzette Geisel, congratulations on her getting her proclamation, but she forgot to mention the date of the animal shelter fundraiser that's being put on by the Women's Club. It's this Friday, April 13th, at Madison Place. 876 Horace Brown Drive is the address. She referenced the Union Hall. Starts at 5:15. Admission costs $10 and includes three paddles for Quarter Mania with a limited number of additional paddles available to buy. Secondly, I have a regards for the council from Councilman Corbett, who has been home for almost 10 days now. He is doing extremely well, and he sends his regards.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager, Ms. Marsh.
No to that, sir.
Thank you. Acting City Clerk, Ms. Sanchez. Councilor Grafstein.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Scott.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to announce, you can't announce it enough because it goes for a wonderful cause, for our animal shelter, that the Women's Club is sponsoring a Quarter Mania. It's hard for me to explain, but just bring lots of quarters, because you're going to be bidding on things, and we're going to have a raffle and an auction. And again, it's this Friday, April 13th, beginning at 5:15, and the auction starts at 7:00. Tickets are $10, and you will be able to purchase something to eat if you're hungry that night. So it's going to be a fantastic event, and I hope we get a lot of turnout to help our animal shelter. And thank you very much, Mr. Sherman, for remembering that, to say that. Also, we got a nice honor by our Governor, Rick Snyder, who has nominated the Chief of Police, Cory Haynes, to serve on a commission committee for juvenile justice. The governor advises, I'm sorry, the committee, what they do is they advise the governor on juvenile justice issues, and they guide effective implementation of juvenile justice policies and programs. And I know that Cory, our Chief of Police, will be very qualified to be on that committee, and I think it's quite an honor for our city to be on a state committee. Cory is working on his Juris Doctorate at the University of Detroit, Michigan Mercy School of Law, and he will represent the law enforcement and juvenile justice agencies. So we thank him for her service. And I would also request a condolence resolution for the family of Ralph C. Merkel, who passed away last week. I know many of us were at his visitation and his funeral. Ralph is another pioneer in our city. He has lived here. He was born in 1928, and he married his bride, Mary Louise Merkel, the same year that we became a city, in 1955. So they were married for 63 years. Mary has served on our Historical Commission and really has helped us more with history than anybody in our city. She, Ralph had worked for the city of Madison Heights for over 20 years as a sanitation worker, and he was also involved in our Cause Program, which is a civilian volunteer program to help deter crime in Madison Heights, and that was a long time serving. He was also one of our volunteer firefighters way back in the early days of the 50s, and we want to let his family know how much we appreciate. Ralph and Mary Louise raised six children here in Madison Heights, and many of them are still here, plus he also has 10 great-grandchildren and I believe 10 grandchildren. So he's left a legacy of everything and we appreciate so much his memory and everything he did for our city. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Soltes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to recognize that in April, April was the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. I suggest visiting the website, childwelfare.gov. They have a timeline of when child welfare policies existed since I think the first federal law signed into legislation by President Nixon, actually, it wasn't that long ago, 1971. But it created a identification, treatment, and prevention of child abuse. Also, there's a proclamation from the state of Michigan. I would like council, if we could draft a resolution in support of the National Child Abuse Prevention Month for next session. We could use the same language as they did, as published. I think it's important that we take a stand for the children who obviously can't speak for themselves. In fact, I'd like to read some stats that I, that I was reading about in the current crisis affecting children here in Michigan. It only breaks it down by state, but throughout the decades. And so in 2017, according to the Children's Trust Fund, the number of complaints investigated were 90,760. That's almost 100,000 complaints in one year. 29% of the investigations resulted in evidence of abuse or neglect, so that's about a third. Of all assigned investigations in 2017, a total of, that would be 26,017 complaints confirmed, but 37, almost 38,000 were identified victims. 40% of the victims were under the age of four. In approximately 82% of the cases, the perpetrator was a parent of some sort, could be a natural parent, could be a stepfather, mother. So I just think it's interesting, I think we need to take a look at this and understand a little bit better within our own community and see how we can help out the children again that are, according to this, a third of them are going through some type of abuse in the year's timeframe. So I would like to see us vote on the proclamation if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with you. I'd like, we'll work with staff to get a model resolution before council quickly. Thank you, Mr. Soltes. Is there any further business before City Council tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McGilvery?
Yeah, now that Mr. Soltes reminded me, this coming Thursday, between 5:30 and 6:30, we're planning pinwheels out in front of City Hall. I say we, it's my wife that's doing it, actually. Women's Club and Youth Assistance is working together and they're going to have some activities for the kids in the Breckenridge Room at the library, excuse me, starting at 5:30, and small refreshments, as I understand it, cookies and punch or something. And then we're all going outside to plan a pinwheel, so come Friday morning, when it's supposed to be 60 degrees out and nice and sunny, we'll see all the pinwheels out there spinning. And it's all for the prevention of child abuse.
Thank you, sir. The meetings adjourned. Good night.
Mr. Mayor?
Meetings adjourned, sir.